All right, we're here tonight for a hearing for the energy, enhanced energy chapter for the Cavendish Town Plan. And we have no, is there anybody, members present on Zoom? Okay, well, I guess this presentation will be for the benefit of anybody looking on television. So basically, this comes out of Act 174, which was passed in 2016, which establishes a new set of municipal and regional energy planning standards, which if met will allow plans to carry greater weight, substantial deference. That's the two major categories are substantial deference and due consideration. So we developed this chapter with the help of the Regional Planning Commission. Hey there. And we felt that it was really important to have substantial deference. And we're not really sure what that means. I did talk to the director. There haven't been any projects yet that have gone under this Act 174. But basically, it just gives us more local control. And there's four sections. There's the purpose. Section one is to encourage the efficient use of energy. And also, the goal is to be 90% renewable by 2050. And, you know, the plan, it isn't, it doesn't force people to do things in terms of energy conservation, it just makes suggestions in terms of, you know, transportation, weatherization, things like that. And there's energy targets, which again is the 90% renewable, and it tells us ways how we can do that. One example is to encourage people to look for programs. The town can kind of show where these programs are for weatherization. Other things would be, say, if the town is going to be building a new facility, to look into using the most efficient heating and cooling systems, mechanicals basically. And then we also have maps.
Hey, Bruce.
Hi.
So.
Hi, 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 hi.
Over the maps here briefly. So we have our solar resources map. You can see that areas in the dark red are prime solar. A lot of it's up on Carbell Road. And also, this blue line is three-phase power, which you need to have solar facilities, large ones. And the yellow is secondary, not quite as good for solar. And then, over here, we have hydro, which we don't have a lot of potential, other than the Black River. There's some undeveloped hydro potential up by Nap Pond. Not really sure what that means. I know with the dams and everything, they could do something. And then, we have wind. Now, this is the constraints of wind here. See the dark purple here is probably the best areas, so wind speeds over 10 miles an hour. And then you have sort of the lesser areas here up on Honk Mountain. So, not very many areas for that. And then we have constraints. So we have new sheds. This hatched area is 25% slope or greater, which is quite a bit in Cavendish. We have scenic roads in green. So that is description of the maps. I don't know if anybody on the board has anything they'd like to say about it? Anybody? Give the board.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Glad to see them.
Anybody from the public?
About the maps?
Well, just about the energy plan in general.
Yeah, well, you, we talked about this last night, you, me, and Bruce, and I definitely looked at language based on what you said. But the problem with this plan is that it's all very well and good, and that's great that they mention how no person gets left behind, but they give, there's no choice about it, let's face it. We know that to do solar, lithium batteries, any of this stuff, it's slavery, it's modern slavery. And Canada is really starting to address that. And I just think we should, you know, for future generations, et cetera, we need to acknowledge that. And we also need, the state has nothing in there on hydro, I mean hydrogen, fuel cells, or nuclear energy. And having a kid that has been very involved and works in this very seriously, he's pretty clear that these non-renewables aren't going to be as, I mean, to be, and I think as a town, we can say, yeah, we're environmentally concerned, and we want to do this, we're going to have difficulty doing it because we're a small town. I just think it's a qualifier, we should have that, you didn't want to use the word slavery. So I worked, I did work around on language with that for you, Timmy.
Okay.
But I do think that we need to acknowledge what truly is going on, otherwise we come out as a nice imperialist country and let those people in the Congo and in Brazil have their land destroyed for lithium, or all the other minerals that are needed because to extract them in the way they're extracting them. So I think that just has to be said, I've set up an oil legislature, it's fallen on deaf ears, everybody's electric, electric. If anybody hasn't seen it, Toyota is, just announced they're coming out with a solid-state battery, it'll probably be available in 2027, half the way, no lithium. So it's coming, and I did certainly see that. But there was such an emphasis on the plan about, you know, the, we want everybody to have this available here in Vermont, and it was so self-serving on Vermont that it just precluded the understanding of how this works.
Mm-hmm.
And that is a concern to me. And I just think by introducing that section, with saying, okay, we're on board with, we want to do environmental stuff, we do recognize this. We are the town of abolitionism for the state. We did that in the 1800s, we need to be aware of that today. And there are, it's going to cost more to buy from Canada. But a lot of their mining, I think, is on indigenous lands, and they've already put language in place. You know, they say this is upgraded every six years, pardon?
Eight at a minimum. It always updated sooner.
Mm-hmm.
So my recommendation is that there are qualifiers before you just say, we buy this a climate change.
Okay, do you have any language that you?
Yeah, you can use this, I mean, I just, I've been out all day. I'm trying to catch up with Jason all day.
To get those copies, we could kind of read along.
You can certainly have this, I just basically said, Cavendish recognizes the significant impact of climate change and the need to be proactive in reducing our environmental footprint. At that end, while we include the state of Vermont's comprehensive energy plan as part of this Cavendish-Vermont Town Plan, we qualify this inclusion as follows. Cavendish is a small town with limited resources and will adhere as it can to the bold and objective of the state document. As we believe in environmental responsibility, products should be sourced from companies where working conditions are safe and secure, workers are paid a living wage, and the environment in which the workers operate is not being destroyed by mining and extraction. C, in addition to the renewable forms of energy from solar wind and hydro, we wish Vermont necessarily consider other alternative sources such as nuclear energy and hydrogen and fuel cells. And a lot of other states are doing this. Florida, nobody was more anti-nuclear than California. And they're now, their governor, Newsom, was just so anti. Now they're extending, I think to 2029, the Canyon Nuclear Plant, they're bringing more along. So I just think it's something that we have to, among the things we have to consider.
Mm-hmm. Jason, what do you think about including, you know, nuclear power as a, that the Public Service Board might look upon that unfavorably, or?
It needs to be consistent with the state planning goals and all this stuff. And that is, as you were mentioning earlier, you know, 90% renewable, or about that 10%, you know? I mean, you know, the nuclear piece is good in the sense that there's not, it doesn't contribute to climate change, and, you know. So there might be, there might be some open area there. And I think the language Margot was suggesting wasn't like, we must do this, we must have.
Right.
So I think, you know, it doesn't strike me as inappropriate language.
Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, that's very good, but I think this slavery business, while it exists, it ought to be stopped. It shouldn't be exaggerated. So figures, I looked this up a bit, and I was an expert, but I looked up a bit. And it seems that the, as we're talking about mainly about the Congo, and it's something like 60 to 70% of the world's production. And of that, you have different estimates you see, but seen estimates for 3 to 21% that are being mined artisanly. Now, that's not slavery, it's not child labor necessarily. These, one of these people, this dirt forward, this is the best they can do, and then people have been a slave. But this means a relatively, quite a small proportion of these people are actually a slave. It shouldn't stop, especially no question about them, they shouldn't be exaggerated about the proportion. And there are other places in the world, like Australia's a large reserve, Cobalt, I'm talking about Cobalt mostly here. Australia also produces over 50%, but that's, that's the amount, I think we have a lot of slavery in Australia. So it's all worthwhile to mention that and work against it, but it shouldn't be exaggerated. Sometimes you hear people say things that sound like it's all being done artisanly, and all these slaves. It just really, it's really hard to get an handle on that, but I'm suggesting it shouldn't be, it should be mentioned and not exaggerated.
Okay. Yeah, personally, I mean, I don't have an issue with including the language.
I mean, you're welcome to take it and massage it. As I said, this was a five-minute thing I did, because I've been busy all day, but you're welcome to do it, just as you said. But if you're thinking, you know, we're a small town, how many grants do you want to write this month? You know, if you're Burlington, you've got a full-time grant writer, if you're Chester, you have a full-time grant writer, we don't have that here.
Right. I mean, I think it's okay to include, but yeah, not dwell on it, because I mean, it's basically, we're trying to get local control over, and we don't really have control over, you know, how these things are mined, whatever.
You have, you have, you have control on purchasing power.
We do, yes.
And that you have to be mindful of. And I think we're getting some of this stuff Canada's doing, they're very on top of that. They've definitely been addressing it. There have been a lot of other places, Harvard's handled hygiene, is doing a lot of work around this, been looking at a lot of that stuff.
Right.
And there are, you know, it's really hard, and that's the thing, everybody thought, well, if we buy from China, they're not doing this, and then they found out China actually has more issues, and it's pretty grim. So, we just don't want to buy into stuff. I'm only going to use myself on, I'm feeling like an abolitionist wearing a cotton shirt, but whatever.
Does anybody on the board have any thoughts on this?
Well, none of the energy products or will have 100% positive, are 100% positive. Everything like from petroleum to nuclear, all has its drawbacks. So I guess we have to come up with a plan where we can use this here, and this here, and this here, and not exclude, you know, some of the resources that might be available. So petroleum has its drawbacks, nuclear waste deposit has its drawbacks. I mean, we, I understand, and I don't want kids working on lithium either, but I just...
You know what's really interesting? I've had reason to talk efficiency Vermont quite a bit in the last couple months. And you know how they've always, we thought everything be pumped, be pumped, be pumped? The guy was really straight with me, he said, it's really to supplement something else because it's not going to work particularly where we live. Yeah, right.
Right here?
Good for air conditioning.
When it's really cold, we have to run the oil boiler here.
Yeah.
Not much, but we had to.
Yeah, I don't know, but I was surprised, because I always thought that was the primary of whatever else you use, whether, but they now are selling, that you can get credits for, and all this stuff, more efficient, oil burners and inside, what we always called pot boilers outside, now they want those inside, and they want them pellet stoves, that they'll be able to really do data on. That was very different. It was, the big thing they're pushing more than anything is weatherization.
Is weatherization, well, that makes a big impact, that's for sure.
Yeah, there's a saying that the cheapest BTU you could buy is the one you don't use.
That's true.
And you accomplish that through weatherization. And efficiency to a certain extent, but you can have a, you can have a gas boiler that's 98% efficient, but if it's all weaving through cracks in the windows and the doors, it's really not that efficient.
Okay. So, I mean, if we are going to incorporate this language, I'd rather not have to go through another planning commission hearing. Is that something we can, I mean, if the board votes on it, we should vote on it?
You know, if you think it's significant, and it could be, and this is more than just punctuation changes, I mean, you could just continue the hearing until your next meeting, and bring it back with changes.
We should do that.
Yeah, that makes sense, rather than reposting it, yeah, rabbitizing it.
Yeah, it's not to repost it, it's whatever, so, I'd be willing to do it.
Okay. How's everybody feel about that?
That's fine, yeah. I mean, if I understand correctly, we were proposing is more, hey, we'll do due diligence when we source any energy solutions to consider that host of factors you listed. So it's not, yeah.
And it's more than, and it's also a recognition that we're a small town, and we have small, limited resources, and we're going to do what we can do.
Right.
But don't expect the same results you see out of Burlington, because, you know, and we've done pretty amazing stuff so far.
Yeah, absolutely. So you've scoped it, and you've, we've provided an intent, but we haven't, nothing is ironclad in that to, I don't think we're going to get in trouble down, I think either way, I'm happy to vote it now, or happy to vote later personally, but.
Well, we'd probably, yeah, we'll just suspend the hearing until September, there won't be any August meeting, because usually people are gone. Yeah, that, we can, we can make a vote on that, if people are interested to make a motion to, oh, wait, we should probably wait if there's any other comments about the plan. Brendan?
Hello, Tim.
How you doing? We're just seeing if you had any comments on the Enhanced Energy Plan chapter?
I did not, I kind of agree with what you, before you go.
Okay, all right.
Are you working it? Email it for you?
Jason. No, email it would be great.
Okay, we'll do.
Jason, you don't have to name them, but are there any towns in the, in the Planning Commission that are doing nothing?
You mean not, they don't have a?
That don't have an energy plan, and they don't intend to do one?
Yeah, there's two at the moment. One might do it down the road, but, you know, the likelihood of them having substantial renewable energy projects is nil, so they're kind of like, eh, but there's one that just doesn't like it.
And probably the Northeast Kingdom is collectively like that.
I'm sure there are other towns, yeah, and I imagine you're right, but I don't know the numbers.
You're just talking about your country and area.
Yeah, I'm just talking about our area, but, yeah, I'm sure there's, not every town has a town plan that will enhance energy chapter, so, there's quite a few that don't.
Okay.
Probably for different reasons, but I know there's one in our region that just doesn't like it. The only state telling them what to do is sort of the way they're looking at it.
Yeah.
So we should probably make a motion then, to, to see if we want to accept the addition of Margot's, I guess we'd call it, what?
Sort of like it's a preamble to it, just a really an introduction.
Preamble, yeah, okay. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, motion is passed.
Noah, do you want to cut?
Yeah, that'd be great.
You're the, since you're the minutes guy.
And then, if there, is there any other discussion on the Enhanced Energy Chapter? All right, well, we can make a motion to suspend the hearing until September's meeting. Someone wants to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, none opposed? All right, motion is passed. All right, so we're closing the hearing temporarily, and we will go on to our regular July meeting. So I'll call the meeting to order at 6:50.
Oh, Tim, real quick, are we, are we able to post that once you get the email of that? That way people can then comment on it?
Yes.
In the next hearing?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we're going to do that. That way, if we change it language in between that timeframe?
Yes.
Then we have a deadline to have it posted, and have people, that way people can see it and prepare, and then it can be addressed at the next meeting and finalize it.
Yes, yeah, we could vote on it, assuming everybody's okay, but yeah, once Margot gives me, I can send it.
Yeah, because initially, the initial language I heard, I didn't have any issue of it, but I just probably, you know, make sure that we post it for the town to see it.
Yes.
And no one has a problem with language.
Right.
Okay.
We can do that. Okay, item two, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Item three, we have approved meeting minutes from the June meeting. We'll give everybody a minute to look at them.
Those are very detailed minutes, Noah, did you use the program to just?
No, that's, that's how I usually take in minutes, it's been pretty transcribed, but...
Yeah, did you get a copy, Bruce?
No, I've got to start sending them to me.
Okay.
I sent it late.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've...
You have my email address?
I do.
You do?
Yeah. The same one that Tim uses for everything.
Okay.
Yep, I mean, if you want to, I've looked at them, I don't know if you want to look at them on the phone.
Yeah, if I'm going to vote on them, I want all these.
Yeah, you could abstain if you wanted, or whatever.
They're only six pages.
I'll abstain, I really can't read it.
Okay.
I just...
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll abstain, because it wouldn't be fair for me to...
Sure, okay.
Hold me a problem.
Okay, when everybody, anybody wants to make a motion, when you're ready to accept the meeting minutes?
Those are really good minutes, I'll make the motion to accept.
Aye, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay.
One abstention.
Oh, one abstention, yes, Bruce.
For me, the simple reason is I haven't read them all, or thoroughly. I'm sure there's no problem with it, but.
Okay, so, we'll go, item five, new business, representatives from Mount Aschutney Regional Commission present to discuss subdivision regulations. Jason Rasmussen is here to talk us through and start a discussion.
Jason, were you with the commission when we attempted to do them back in, I think, 1987 or '88, or did you come along after that?
I was after that.
Okay, well, we did try.
Tried, didn't work, but we tried again, right?
No, yeah, it really went down in flames, too.
Yeah.
It wasn't even close.
So, did everyone get some of those samples?
Yes.
Yes, yep. I sensed a few more along, too.
And they saw this is sort of the basics.
Yeah, everybody got this, yep.
So hopefully this gives you a sense of what subdivision is. And essentially, it's a process that, you know, and I would suggest you start simple, and don't go crazy with it initially. It's really just a process to review how land's divided, how many lots are created, and how access is given to the lots and utilities, and just sort of keep it to the basics. That being said, you know, statute requires certain administrative functions, and you have to spell out who's doing what, who reviews it, you have to have some detailed standards about the size and shape of lots, or something to that effect, natural resources, a few details like that. Usually, it's, a lot of, a lot of the focus is about roads, driveways, utilities, where the lots are. It can be an important tool to look at for, you know, preventing forest fragmentation, or minimizing it, things like that, but anyway, that's the sort of the basics, and I hope that this helps folks understand it. Are there any questions on sort of what is it? And we can talk a little bit more about the details, and what you want to do, like, anything initially, any initial questions that you have?
It was an easy read.
Good.
What's the, in towns similar to this, where they're implementing it later on, is there, is there like one main pushback reason, or reason that people push back on it?
I mean, there's, I mean, there's always some people who don't like great rules and regulations, right? So there's going to always be somebody out there who doesn't like it just because it's, it is a rule, it's a regulation. You know, when you create a new law, you're going to have to come to a board, or account manager, whoever's authorized to do it, to make the decision on the proposal, and they're going to have to show, they usually have to hire a surveyor, and so there's a cost associated with that. And so, you know, there's going to be some people who don't want to deal with that. But I think, on the other hand, you know, it is a valuable tool to understand, number one, you know, where's new lots being created, and before they go on for sale, you know, is there access? You know, sometimes these things are on a class four road that's not maintaining it, somebody might buy it and not realize, oh my gosh, you know, nobody maintains that, and whatever. So to some extent, you're creating a process that protects a future buyer, you know, from certain things like that. And there's some other benefits, you can, it's easier to update your personal data and other things like that, Emerald, and so forth and so on, so there's some benefits.
I think, too, it can protect neighboring landowners, you know, say, from drainage issues, or things like that. But now, can, is there, can subdivision regulations, can you control density in terms of number of lots? Can you give credit, say, if the cluster?
Usually not.
No?
Usually not, I mean, there might be some exceptions, maybe you have, I mean, you can have a hybrid that's zoning and subdivision. The density thing is really getting, zoning, that's really where that happens. So generally, no.
Okay.
How, if we worked hard accomplishing as much as we can at each meeting, how long would it take to enact subdivision regulations?
I mean, well, yeah, I mean, I think the main thing is, how long does it take to craft something that everyone's happy with?
Within a year?
Yeah, honestly, a year, year and a half, often what things like that take, but it could be quicker.
Okay.
You may say, oh, look at what Sharon did, that's, a few changes, that's perfect. And so, from that point on, like, you get to the point where you have something you like, it can be a few months to adopt that.
What about in lieu of subdivision regulations, a driveway ordinance?
I mean, you could certainly do a driveway ordinance, yep. That's a lot more simple, and the select board usually just does it.
We've got, we have development going on on Healed Road, and as I went by just today, there was some heavy equipment, and they're putting in what can only be described as a driveway from hell. It's probably 12 to 18% grade, no easement coming down to the ditch. And, you know, I, I would certainly not buy a house on that, on that lot. I could just imagine coming down there on an icy morning, and I don't know how they expect to get an oil truck or a propane truck up there.
Yeah, I mean, driveway... Yeah, I mean, driveways...
Let alone a fire truck or an ambulance.
Driveways are sometimes tricky, you know, the, the driveway permitting process through the select board usually is limited to, generally speaking, the town roadway. So when you sort of get up and beyond, they can get into things like drainage problems, and you know, your driveway wash away to town road below it, or something like that. But, you know, the subdivision might be a better tool for emergency access, for example, beyond the town roadway.
Yeah.
It kind of depends what the issues are, but I think a driveway permitting ordinance situation would be good. And, and maybe in concert with some, you know, again, it depends on what the, what's the right tool for your problems that you're experiencing.
I would hope to wrap the driveway ordinance into the subdivision regulations. But I'm thinking of something that can be done over the next three or four months, although the horse has left the bar.
Yeah.
And, you know, on these particular lots.
A driveway, I mean, that's gonna, that could be simpler, it could be, it doesn't even necessarily involve the planning commission. It could just be the select board crafts some, you know, their state statutory language, it doesn't have to be fancy, it could be basic.
Okay.
If it in that, uh, the driveway ordinance, pretty quick. Um, and they'd have to, then they'd have to do it, uh, and they'd have to have forms, application forms. Whether the town manager, or the road foreman, or whoever has to issue the permits, they have to start doing that.
But is there a way to dictate anything onto that private property?
Well, well, once it's already built, you know, it, it's sort of tough, but if they, you know, if they make changes to it, or if they, like, they had another house to it, or, you know, they expand it, or something, then they might need to come back and get another permit.
Mm-hmm.
They might then need to come into compliance. Maybe it's too far gone, but maybe, you know, they require to do a bunch of stormwater improvements, or, you know, something like that, to make it... You know, a lot of the times, I think, the, the problem is that they're too steep, and they don't really do enough, um, drainage and that sort of thing, and you can have washing out in the town road below it, and things like that, or... Like, say, you can't get the emergency services up there, but if it's built, it's kind of hard to fix it.
Has this, have we broached this subject to the select board, or, uh...
Yes.
They, so they're behind wanting a subdivision regulation kind of blueprint?
They're behind us developing them, whether or not they're for them, I don't know, but they did give us the go-ahead to develop them.
Okay, well, 'cause I'm just... I'm just concerned that, okay, I'd rather have them, there be a majority vote on it from the select board, because we're gonna do all this work.
Mm-hmm.
A year worth of work doing this blueprint, and then all of a sudden, they get a lot of pushback from the town, saying that this is a Trojan horse, Trojan horse to ord-, um, you know, zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, the, the, uh, the, the, uh, town votes on it, not just the select board.
Right.
So that's, the select board approves that we could go ahead, um, with the, with a special election or a special vote.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we failed on our previous attempt.
Mm-hmm.
And that also happened with zoning.
Right, surely, did you have anything?
Uh, I liked the Weathersfield, um, plan and the Ludlow plan, in that I thought they were an excellent way to, to set up our own plan. You can almost plug and play Cavendish, and, in that, as a start to, for a draft...
Mm-hmm, yes, you're right, it's called zoning by Xerox.
Well, to start with, and then we put in things that may be particular...
Yeah.
To our location.
Yep.
But I really thought that they were well thought out, those two plans.
And there's some decisions you can make, too, you know, like, Weathersfield has, I think, if I remember right, they have like a sketch plan review, and preliminary plan review, and a final subdivision review. You don't necessarily need all those things.
Correct, but it's a basis.
You just have one review process, for example, just to keep it simple.
Yeah, that scares people.
Starting point, right?
Right, maybe minor subdivisions, or two or three lots.
Maybe, maybe they just go with one step and...
Yeah.
One could take these two plans side by side and put your own in the middle, and say, I like this, I like this, I like this, I like this, and then present it as a draft, and then we could make changes for instance.
Right, I think Miguel, getting back to your question, I, I think that the select board's behind us developing them. So, in terms of, I mean, we have to kind of start developing them to get any public input. So, I mean, they...
Well, I'm guessing, I mean, now that it, you know, we're okay with the, you know, taking plans that are existing and kind of, you know, merging them, you know, together, I don't think it'll take that long to, to develop them.
Right.
You know? But...
Right.
I just will, don't want to be set up for failure.
Right.
Kind of thing, I mean, it's like, okay, uh, do this little side project, kind of thing, with real no intention of seeing it go anywhere.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of thing, 'cause like, you know, again, if we tried this already, and, you know, it's too close to zoning for anybody's liking, then...
The, the language we put into that, um, with requiring mylar's that would be, uh, had to be on, uh, you know, on file in the town office, um, even though they make sense. Uh, that, that stuff scared people. That's, that's why they voted it down, it was, they were, they were afraid of it. They were, they were afraid that they were gonna lose control of their land. Man, I think I said at the last meeting, there were people that were talking about, what if I wanna, um, take a portion of my property and, and leave it to my, one of my children to build a house? And that was important, but on the other hand, they didn't have any land to, to leave to their children. Now, so it was, it was, it was a hypothetical, but it carried a lot of weight at that meeting.
Mm-hmm. That sounds like an education piece, though, that could address that.
I think it's a publicity and education piece, right?
We terrified people, way too, way too onerous.
But if you, if you, if you work for the general public and not work for individuals who don't like this, or don't like that, or I want this, or I want that, and you, you put it as a safety and, um, thing for the public at large, it, it might help a little bit. But there will always be people who say, well, I don't want somebody telling me what to do. But if you live in a community and you're civic-minded, you might tend to, you know, be more generous.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's some other considerations, too, that, you know, maybe, so typically a subdivision deals with, like, lot-line adjustments, so they're not creating new lots, they're just shifting lines between two properties. Um, you could exempt, like, like, you know, maybe, you know, when you start with a, a new thing like this, maybe you just say, well, we don't really care about that, let's exempt those things, just, that can continue to happen the way it's always happened, let's really focus on the creation of new lots, and new accesses and lots. You know, like, so maybe there's some things like that.
I like that.
And in this plan, there were at the end, um, pla- places where you can review things and make exceptions based on the, the common sense of it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there's another thing I commonly hear, and it's like, you know, when somebody has some, let's say, a hundred acre lot, and they just wanna create a small lot for their kid, or something like that. You know, requiring a full perimeter survey gets expensive, right? So maybe you say, well, okay, in situations like that, that's not required, you know, you just need a survey of the affected area.
Right, that makes sense.
Or something like that. So, I mean, there may be some things like that, that can make it sound a little more reasonable, you know?
Make it feel a little more reasonable, too.
And maybe, maybe, more reasonable, you know? Um, so, and, you know, do those sorts of ideas resonate, is that something that works?
Be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, yeah, we're not, like, the one and two lot subdivisions, that's kind of not what they're for, it's for the big subdivisions. Yeah, like the ten, twenty lot. So I think we should make it as easy as possible for someone if they wanna split off two lots.
Just set standards and guidelines without having, having rules set in stone about this or that.
Right, and I think, you know, planning commission can be proactive, people come in with just a sketch plan, we can kind of guide them.
Right, and if, if you have something to begin with, then you have something to, everybody knows what page they're on.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Jason, I don't know if you had any experience with, like, lawsuits from individuals against towns that don't have subdivision regulations? I mean, is that...
Don't? Um...
Is that a...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, should that be a consideration, like, if we don't have regulations and someone, something happens, that, you know, drainage issues, or...
You know, I'm not aware of it, I, you know, it could happen.
Right, okay.
I've certainly heard of people who buy land, and they're like, what do you mean, it's a class four, there's no maintenance.
We had that here, Bailey Hill.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah, so to some extent, it's not, there's not, they're not suing anybody, but, you know, there's some level of, how could somebody allow this to happen?
Sure.
So subdivision is an opportunity to kind of look at those sorts of issues, and hopefully not allow them to happen, or put certain controls in place.
Right, okay. So I guess our next steps, where would that, should we sort of take bits and pieces of what we like, kind of discuss it, and then...
I think so, you know, we, I'd like to, I mean, we're really busy, but I'd like to help you guys out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if there's like Ludlow or Weathersfield, like, if, if we have a sense of, yeah, that's a great starting point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we could try to take it, plug in Cavendish, and make some of these changes I was talking about, and come back and just work our way through it, um, from that point on, and, uh, see if that would work.
Okay.
Does that make some sense?
Yeah, that makes some good.
Which one, which one, does Weathersfield work for?
I think Weathersfield was more detailed.
It's pretty detailed, yep, I don't know if that's good or bad.
I don't know either, but, uh, it was more exact, I think.
Okay, was Ludlow the other one?
I'm sorry?
You said, was Ludlow the other one you suggested?
Uh-huh, they were very similar in many ways, yeah.
Yeah, I think the language should be detailed, just 'cause, so people can't read into it.
Because it's more exact, right, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, we don't have to have all the restrictions.
How about Andovers?
It's been a while since I looked at them. They're a little old, I mean, they may be fine, but they're, they are definitely old, they might, they, but there are some newer, uh, state requirements that, you know, they might need to...
Update.
...be tough a little bit, but, um, but, you know, Weathersfields are two thousand and ten, maybe, I mean, they, they may be a little old as well.
Yeah.
So that's gonna happen anyway, so that's for the matter, but, just sort of curious if there was one that jumped out at you, that could be a logical starting point for us.
Okay.
Let's start Weathersfield, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Weathersfield is the, the very detailed one, is there one that falls on the other side of the spectrum, just so we have a, kind of, we can kind of bound...
That's why I was asking about Andover.
Yeah, I mean, Andover's pretty simple, you know, um, Springfield actually tried to really streamline theirs, um, sort of back to the basics kind of an approach, so, um, you know, we can take a look at that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Just see if, uh...
The only examines I had were, were there, so you probably have, uh...
Yeah, so we can kind of, you know, I think we can show you what that looks like, too, and maybe, maybe we wanna simplify some of the standards, Weathersfield does get into some detail that... I think they might have some zoning district related stuff that you wouldn't need, you know, so we could cut that out of there, you know, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm, great. Okay, so maybe for our next meeting, we can kind of dive into Weathersfields and look at Andovers, I could send, you know, if people wanna start marking them up, you know, and then we can...
That's a good idea.
Yeah, great.
E- each of us as individuals...
Yeah.
Can review it online, and then do, see what we like and don't like.
Yeah, I think that would work.
Good.
All right, is there anything else that we, anything else that you wanna discuss on subdivision regulations? Okay, um, did I skip over here, citizens? I'm very, I apologize.
We are wonderful citizens.
Well, why don't we go straight to you guys, here, citizens, so I apologize. Okay.
First of all, I, I'm a bunch of you have, were not around for, for our issue, which is Savage Quarry at the end of Tierney Grove.
I'm not aware.
Last year, the April fifth meeting, uh, Bruce said a few things, a couple of things that we thought that might have been binged on, the decision at that time. Uh, so I have a couple of questions, and Scotty Lynam has a related question. Uh, anyway, so, uh, again, I apologize for the new people having nothing to do with us.
Mm-hmm.
Do we understand that Act two fifty is invoked if a project is on a property of one acre or more, regardless of the size of the physical footprint, the project itself? And note that when the Supreme Court originally ruled that the Tierney Grove group appealed to prevent the Savage Quarry, Justice Cohen decided, as they say, legislate from the bench, and reinterpret two fifty to mean the project itself had to be over one acre. But this was overturned after some appeal, Tierney Grove group led by our lawyer Merrill Bent, uh, with several state agencies initiated having them reconsider the decision, which they did. Uh, so, uh, that's kind of the introduction here. Now, Bruce implied that about forty-one minutes into the meeting, that if a project is under one acre, the town can still declare it to be both commercial, a commercial project, and have some oversight. This contradicts what we understood to be the planning commission's position, these are paid to Savage Quarry, but we were told that there was nothing the town could do. So, which is correct, it's hard to conceive of a quarry of this size being, not being a commercial project. Uh, so that's a major question. The other one, uh, I'm sorry, Bruce, but you said that, that a couple of years ago, going back to this, uh, business with the Supreme Court, a couple of years ago, uh, based on commercial status, uh, activity had changed, we weren't able to find anything, and maybe this was a reference to the, uh, overturned Supreme Court, uh, decision. So, those are, basically are two questions, um, and was it overturned, I mean, was there a new, uh, a change in the law? And number two, a little specific, like, commercial status, uh, could, uh, is that really a thing? And could the, the planning commission, select board, the town, know something about it?
Well, I, I think I was talking about water on that, conserving water, that whether it's under Act two fifty jurisdiction or not, uh, if it's contaminated or polluting water, uh, it, it's in violation of the State Water Resources Board's regulations, and it has to either be corrected or denied.
You, uh, you didn't say that at the time, I, I wrote down everything you said, uh, starting at forty-one thirty, you said, uh, it could be under one acre, as long as it's considered commercial, it can be subject to an Act two fifty review, if the town wants it.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, they changed that law a couple of years ago, so, but I don't remember anything about water, I mean, none of this just being...
Well, that would be an example of why, if it were to come under, uh, town review, that would be one of the main, um, criterion that it could be...
Uh, maybe so, Bruce, but this was all in reference to commer- uh, property, commercial property, which, as I said, certainly a quarry would be a commercial property, and probably many other things would be commercial property. Uh, but we never heard of this at the time, uh, so...
No, it was, it was about the size of, uh, the project or the, the property that, that's under one acre, and you said that the law...
Yes, a town can make that property that's under one acre, that's commercial, subject Act two fifty review, they can do that.
Right, so, so...
I didn't, I, I never meant to imply that the town of Cavendish was necessarily going to do that, but they can.
They could.
They could, the select board could make that decision.
So, we were told all along that there was nothing the town could do. You're, you're saying, yes, there was something it could do, but they preferred, yes, to ignore the...
That, that would be fair.
...of us, including four Vietnam, Vietnam veterans, and the, uh, benefit to us, that was, been completely ignored for other reasons, the market said.
Yeah, they can, they can apply the, Jason, am I right? Town can, uh...
I don't know about that.
Town can ask, uh, 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 ask, uh, for Act two fifty review on a commercial property?
They can, they can ask for jurisdictional opinion, for sure, and that, you know, it would be up to Act two fifty to say, yeah, you're, yeah, you're an A, you gotta go through Act two fifty or not, I think.
Could we, I think, I think what I'm...
Yeah, yeah, so that's, uh, the, when, uh, the Savages, uh, the Savages and Snowstorm, uh, proposed this quarry on hundred seventy-six acres, uh, they asked, uh, for a jurisdictional opinion. And the state, Bill Burke, uh, the, uh, Natural Resources Board Commissioner, issued an opinion on October eighteen, in twenty seventeen, and he specifically said that this project requires, I will read, uh, exactly what the opinion said. Uh, the opinion stated that based on the arrangement between Justice and Marine Savage and Jason Snow, the quarry project falls under Act two fifty, that the motivation of the original proposal... that the motivation of the original proposal was to evade and not to avoid Act 250 jurisdiction, and that the argument made by the neighbors' attorney was overwhelmingly compelling. So the state issued the opinion that this project requires Act 250. And I remember Tim, you said in April at the Planning Commission meeting, that when the state reviews the project, the planning commission has, then assesses, has to assess this project, whether it complies with the town plan. Did the plan, the planning commission assess that project in 2017, after the Bill Burke issued the opinion?
No, we never received an Act, Act 250 application. That's our jurisdiction. If an Act 250 application comes in to our board, I think it's criteria intent, does the project conform to.
To the town plan.
To the town plan. I mean, we never received any plans, we don't, we don't have an Act 250 permit application to act on.
Okay, but the town plan says, interpretation of the plan, the town plan, the Cavendish Planning Commission recognizes that the town plan has regulatory effect only for projects which require an Act 250 permit, commercial or industrial and all of that. So, has regulatory effect for projects which require an Act 250 permit. So they, the Bill Burke, suggested that this permit would be required for the project, right? So you said you didn't receive the permit, you didn't receive the application, because they didn't apply for the application.
That's right.
But they had thirty days after this opinion to appeal to the court, right? Did you know about this at the time?
It was a long time ago.
Long time ago. I mean, probably, I mean, I went to the select board meetings and, yeah, I, I do remember something like that. I don't remember the specifics.
Okay, so you remember that in 2017, that there was the, the opinion, and they could, the Savages and Snowstorm were planning to appeal to the environmental court, right?
I, I can't say for sure. I mean, probably, I mean, I, I mean, what's the, what are you trying to get at?
My point is that these thirty days, the planning commission, the select board, and Bruce, you were the assistant town manager, did any of you talk with the proponents of the quarry or their lawyers to prevent them from taking us to the court?
No.
No.
So you didn't?
No.
You wouldn't try?
No, 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 not at all.
Okay.
We're trying to stay neutral.
Okay, so you're trying to stay neutral. So they're taking us to environmental court. They could have, and you know that they changed their contract, right, in April?
No.
Nope, don't know anything about that.
They changed the, the, the contract they initially signed, initially signed, was changed in Mar, on March 15th, 2018. And that's what, that's what changed the size of the lot on which the, this quarry is going to, to be operated. It's under one acre. It's not part of hundred seventy-six acres, because Marine and Justin Savage are selling this lot to Jason.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So these five months, they've been trying to change conditions of the, of the contract. They changed that. They could have gone back to Bill Burke and said, we want to another, we want another jurisdictional opinion based on this new contract, right? But they didn't, and they took us to court and we start with a litigation now. And what, what the neighbors on Tierney Road are trying to understand, why the town, town plan, the town, select board, why all of you failed to protect taxpayers on Tierney Road? And how can we make sure that this doesn't happen to other taxpayers in Cavendish?
Has anything started yet? The sale has not taken place, or has, has the sale taken place yet?
No, because we still litigating.
So when, and how long has this been going on? Because I'm one of the new people.
It's 2017.
Twenty seventeen, okay, so I'm sure when you went through the town plan, you, you read the whole plan very thoroughly, and on five point, one point five earth resources.
Yes.
There was quite a bit regarding the community that is, that would be impacted on that, and you.
That's right.
You, you encouraged people to listen to that part of it as well, right? The, that, but it had no effect or, yeah.
We had a case, that's when I still lived in Cavendish, so it was, it was pre ninety-five, where an individual wanted to build an automobile repair facility just beyond Cavendish Point Hotel, up on that bank. And it was, it was less than an acre. And Rich Beck, of course, was the town manager, and I was on the, I was actually chairman of the planning commission at that time. And we, we looked at the plans. He said it was less than, less than an acre. So he didn't have to comply with an Act 250 review, and we said, yeah, actually you do, because they weren't gonna have any water. They were going to have a pit privy, because they didn't want to go through the expense of a septic, whether they could even get one there or not. And we said, this isn't, this just isn't viable. You know, this isn't a place to sign an automobile repair facility. This is just ridiculous. In this particular case, they went away. But we used the, the Act 250 cri, the criterion, the whole review process on that property, even though it was, it was less than an acre and it was commercial.
That would have been very helpful for us, for Tierney Road residents.
Did they have a?
Exactly.
Did they have, did they have like a, so they didn't apply for Act?
They did apply for Act 250, yeah.
They did, okay. And then that's when we shot it down as planning commission. So, so there was an Act 250 application process.
It never, it never got to the point of a full review, because Rich shot it down as just a ridiculous concept.
Right.
I don't understand why this paragraph didn't negate the whole thing. These, these four paragraphs in, in the earth resources section.
That's, that's.
I don't understand why, why it's still going after that.
The town.
It says the appropriate, it should not negatively, in fact, the, the region and the, and the residents that are, it protects residents from activities, from operations which have caused adverse health problems and annoyance, like this. Include diesel fuel and dust pollution. I, I don't understand why this wasn't a major impact on that decision.
Well, there's no review process, so if they went through Act 250, all that would get reviewed, and then we could comment on it. I mean, right now, okay, there's gonna be a quarry up there, a small quarry. We don't have any specifics on what the noise is gonna be, hours of operation. I mean, we, philosophically, we just can't say we're against this quarry, because the neighbors are against it.
Well, property evaluation.
Information.
Air pollution.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty well stated in here, I think.
What jurisdiction does the town have without zoning until it, nothing until it gets to Act 250?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so you can, you can see that there is a loophole, and very clever people like Marine and Justin and Snow, Jason Snow, they are very clever to, uh, not to apply for Act 250, and try to change the contract to do everything to get this quarry in the residential area. I don't know whether new members familiar with Tierney Road been there.
Yeah.
It's, it's not the road that it used to be and described as rural. I'll tell you that Tierney Road is a dead and less than one mile road. Twenty-one properties, all with road frontage. Twenty of them have dwellings. More than half of the, of those twenty-one properties are part of the Roundy Farm Association. Are you familiar with the Roundy Farm? Okay, so these, these fifteen or so properties are in two Roundy Farm associations, and they are restricted to use the property. No commercial business, strictly one-family homes. No farm animals, except for eustrian recreation. So these are restrictions on about fifteen homes on Tierney Road, which is less than one mile long. And here you have all these restrictions, and at the top of the hill, you have a quarry that is operating. All the trucks are passing these restricted areas that can, maybe can have some home business. You know, IT people can work, stations work from home, but no farm, no quarry, no sand pit. Actually, there is a sand pit operating right now on Tierney, if you see at the bottom. We, we don't know what permits for that pit has been issued. We have no clue. But if we don't act, people get away with this. And, and the quality of our lives has been affected for six years now. We're not happy to live there, so we are trying to find, find out how can we fix this, so the rest of the Cavendish residents don't have to go through this. Because there is another hundred forty-six acres that have access from Route 131. The Savages own it. Plenty of quarry, of granite there. We don't know how the Glimmerstone mansion will be affected or nearby neighbors. We don't know. We can only speculate, but that's a possibility. So this, what happened to us shouldn't have, shouldn't happen to anybody.
I personally don't know the next step that, that should be taken.
Well, I think just to get back to, that quarry proposal, that was, what, early 2004? And, yeah, that was a major, major project, and they were gonna have access right off of 131. And, yeah, the town took a big stand against it, and it got shot down.
Marine Wells did that.
Yeah.
With Cameron.
So, I mean, the town has taken stands against quarries. We've also, over the years, approved them. Well, the one on Cavendish Golf Road, that Jason Snow operated, and that one got approved. But that's a very small scale.
The Green Marble Quarry on, off of Twenty Mile Stream Road on Quarry Road, still has a active, Act 250 permit to extract stone from there, but he hardly ever does it. He's, he's an, he's, he's an old man now.
I've heard they may be assuming that, if that's true, true or not, at least they're who you are.
Well, you know, they, they probably could, they, they, not probably, they, they could, they have, they have a valid permit, but I don't know really what kind of market there is for that stone, you know.
Sorry, Shirley, you mentioned that.
Yeah, I don't know what the next step would be.
Does that come back to what Noah said about jurisdiction or?
Without, like, until it comes through as an Act 250 permit, like.
Right. That's my concern is, you know.
Unless we adopted zoning.
Right. If we had zoning, it would address quarry, it wouldn't forbid it, but, you know, well, the town plan does do. They have the maximum noise levels and things like that. There's some strict guidelines that we have to look at. And if it doesn't follow, if it doesn't meet those standards, then I don't think as a board, we can, can vote in favor of a quarry or any other business.
What is the next step for, for this couple and the residents of that area as to do if, you know, if they feel they're being taken advantage of by loopholes and that sort of thing?
So you, they, because you're in litigation in the environmental court right now, and that their, the status of the quarry is pending the outcome of that litigation is accurate? Okay, so if they, if the litigation rules in Savage's favor, will, we may not see it, is that, am I correct in saying?
We probably wouldn't, no.
The town is interested party, so you would be notified.
Of the, of the outcome of the litigation?
That's right, and you probably should be aware of all, you know, hearings taking place, because the town is interested party.
I mean, I don't know if the town representatives could be called to testify, to see how it complies with the town plan, but again, we don't have any information on it.
So who needs to give you information?
Right.
Well, I would have, would have to have plans presented to us.
By the.
Yeah, what drives that?
Yeah, whoever, you know, the, who's, the, the snow, yeah, by the applicant. So we don't have anything to judge this quarry on. I mean, I understand that a lot of neighbors are upset with it. But we can't just make decisions on that. We need, like, evidence. And, because otherwise, I think we're opening ourselves up to, you know, mess with other projects and.
We had an opportunity to hear Justin and Marine Savage and Jason Snow in twenty, was it seventeen? In June, June twenty-sixth, when we all gathered here for the select board meeting. And it was an informational meeting. They were supposed to tell us, the public, on the record, what they are planning, how big the quarry, for how long, and what kind of tools they're going to use. Jason Snow didn't show up. Marine and Justin didn't speak, and the town didn't ask them questions.
Did, did you go to the site review? Were you there, the one where you went to the quarry?
Yeah, we were there, Bruce, too.
Yeah, that was, a lot of questions were asked and answered there.
Yeah, but that wasn't on the record.
Yes, it was. Yeah, all that testimony was duly noted. The three district environmental commissioners were there.
Public wasn't aware of it. It was just Tierney Road residents and lawyers, and the public wasn't aware of it.
Well, anyone that was on the mailing list was, all the interested parties.
The Cavendish people didn't have an opportunity to, to see and hear it, like.
Since they're not necessarily interested parties, the, Rich Beck was Cavendish representative, and anyone that, that feels that they want to, that they should be an interested party, is able to call logistic environmental commission and say, put me on the list. I'm concerned because I live three quarters of the mile down the road, and I, I'm concerned about truck traffic.
Okay, well, thanks for, thanks for hearing us out.
Yeah, I believe it's not a waste of time. It's, it's important to talk about this issue, to face.
As Phil was saying, it could come up for other people. It's still ongoing with us, and so you may, unfortunately, I apologize. But I guess not letting it go until.
Yeah, that's how organizations like the Audubon Society or the Wilderness Society get status on Act 250 hearings. Is they, they realize that there's something going on, and it might affect something that's near and dear to them, and so they ask to become parties to, to the application.
I mean, I don't understand how, there must be a time limit, like, if you wanted to sub, like subdividing a piece of land into under an acre, and then doing a commercial development. I mean, there has to be some rules against, I'm not sure how that works. Must be like a time limit or time?
Five years, I think.
Five years?
I don't, don't hold me to that, but I think that's true.
Because, I mean, it would seem everybody would do that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, um, application sunset. If they're not reading. If they're not renewed.
Right, right.
Correct?
I think so. I mean, you know, we used to see an awful lot of, you know, nine point nine nine acre lots, right? And that's because they're trying to avoid Act 250. So, I mean.
So if.
No, go ahead.
If someone were to can contact an environmental group and and ask them to take a look at it, would they might be interested and then ask more questions?
You know, I don't know, I, you know, this this issue's complicated. I mean, the Supreme Court, I believe, made a decision and then they re-decided it, they reversed their decision and.
It's up and down.
So projects that are less than an acre are exempt from Act 250. So, you know, you know, what do you do? I don't know.
I don't either.
I mean, you know, if you did have subdivision, you would at least have a review of the new lot creation, considering a future thing like this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you can shoot it down per se, but, you know, you at least have a review of the new lot.
Right.
The access, whatever, those details.
Oh, the Julian Brothers quarry, but Chester has a big problem and it's been going on for years and no one asks questions. We don't want to be in this.
Which one is that?
Julian quarry.
Down on 103, I'm guessing.
You mean Alston?
Well, it used to be Alston.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't want to be in that situation, but maybe town has some kind of oversight if the quarry is operating. I don't know.
Only, I mean, if they break their restrictions, or if they, you know, the permit conditions, if they don't abide by them, then I guess that that's the the state would.
Yeah, that gets back to the town plan, like you said, the decibel restriction, things of that nature. I mean, you should, there should be a preemptive review of that, I assume, right? Is that is that our purview as the planning commission? Is that is that where our jurisdiction come in outside of Act 250? I I guess I should look at the.
Yeah, I don't believe we have any jurisdiction.
But there's gotta be enforcement mechanism for that of some sort, right?
Uh, it comes from the state. The state, they they enforce it, yeah.
Yeah, it's more than than somebody coming forward and going, I don't like it. It's more like, I don't like it because of water quality issues.
That's right.
I don't like it because of dust. I don't like it because of noise.
But if we're resting the the restrictions of the town plan, is that the states or the are the state, the folks that enforce that?
The town plan?
Right.
No, we enforce it.
Us as the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, so then there's would, any project that could have potential impact on any of those restrictions or exceed those restrictions.
Right, right.
Falls under our purview regardless of Act 250.
Right, we would, yeah, we would, uh, the state, I think, I mean, I guess we could find, I'm I'm not sure how that works if we have any.
Well, without zoning, if it doesn't go through Act 250, how can we say that, hey, this, you know, half-acre commercial quarry is, if they don't have to go through Act 250, how can we have any jurisdiction?
It would be similar to what I was talking about with the garage, that the one.
The thing you're asking is how, what's the mechanism that we find out about it and it gets put before us? Is that is that correct?
Yeah, like, who, why can't I go and take, you know, do a quarry on my property? It's under half an acre, not Act 250, there's no zoning.
You would, you have, um, you could theoretically, you'd have, um, like, water supply, um, what else would you have?
Roads.
Yeah, roads.
Damage to roads.
Yep.
But like, where does that?
Stormwater, you'd have to get a stormwater permit from the state. But, yeah, the town wouldn't have any jurisdiction, cause, you know, you don't have zoning or... But if it's under an Act 250 application, say they get their permit and then they don't meet their permit conditions, we can file a complaint to the state.
Yep. But I guess, like, say this, say that project went through, can we lean on this and say, hey, we have a town plan that talks about noise, it talks about dust, and this quarry that they're operating is is breaking both of those two things? Is there anything, if they got that permit, this, the town plan really just kind of informs or or gives us kind of a, when we're at that, when we're going through that permit, hey, we have a town plan that emphasizes this, this, and this, and that doesn't align. But once they get that permit, it's, we really don't have any say.
Well, only if they don't abide by the conditions.
Yeah.
Then we can, you know, we could. I don't know if there's anything in town where we have a.
Now, it's not gonna be a situation where they're gonna say, here's your permit, have fun.
Yeah.
There's there's going to be stipulations on that permit.
But if we had a a noise ordinance and they're exceeding that based on just running heavy equipment, they have the permit to do that, so this town plan is negated.
Well.
I mean, if we have an advisor.
That that Act 250 permit, that the town could actually make them get, um, assert Act 250 jurisdiction on that project. Perhaps with reluctance, but that would address things like decibels of machinery and, uh, you know, any anything that has to do with the operation of the quarry that could be determined as detrimental to the neighborhood.
We've got seven of them here, set a list of seven.
Well, I'm familiar with them all.
Yeah.
But, um, can he theoretically do this project without the permit?
Yes.
Yeah. He could.
Yes, he can.
Cause that's why he hasn't acted on getting a permit.
No, he doesn't have to. A town can, when it comes to the items that are on there, as he get, as he starts his work, the town in the form of the select board or even the planning commission can plead with him about hours of operation, weights of trucks on the road, restrictions certain times of year, um, you know, when when the roads are 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 up close because of mud, um, you know, no Sunday operation, Saturday afternoon stop or Saturday stop at noon. We can ask for those things. And they don't necessarily have to abide by them, but they should, as long as they're
But will the town have an oversight then, can enter the property and?
Hmm, legally, I don't think so.
Well, if they have a, if they have it entirely fenced and gated, no.
Or if they have posted.
It's always drones.
Right.
I I think the issue is, you know, who has regulatory jurisdiction over it? The town plan has teeth in Cavendish, cause you don't have zoning and stuff, has teeth only through basically Act 250 or the Public Utilities Commission processes. So outside of that, it's powers of persuasion, unless you adopt the noise ordinance or some other thing like that that would give the town authority to regulate or aspects of it.
I mean, noise ordinances are tough.
Yeah, tough. And then it applies everywhere.
Everybody.
They enforce it and it's.
Chainsaws, guns.
Rapid gunfire on Tierney Road. You know, it's, noise is a problem.
But the hours of operation are limited with the quarry's commercial operation.
When this all started back in 2017, if the parties involved had sat down and worked out a plan of operation, almost all of this pain would have gone away.
I don't think so.
I do.
First of all, we had a number of meetings, uh, we, but there's been a lot of verification on this subject. For example, this was billed as a one-acre, less than one-acre thing, but it just financially, this made no sense that they were gonna stop at one acre, they'll probably take another acre. And since there seems to be no oversight, who knows how many acres are gonna be there up there? So, uh, we feel that there was no way that, well, we didn't want to do all of it, but had other considerations going on, like the fact that it was evident that they would not stop at one acre. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe if we had some trust in them, maybe, maybe something would have been done, but this was.
The moment it went over an acre, the moment it went over an acre, the the powers of Act 250 would come down on them hard.
Well, we're suggesting, number one, that maybe it'd be one acre, then another acre, then another acre, and who knows how many acres? I'm saying, we just simply don't know what's gonna happen up there.
Yeah. I do feel, I I feel it was unfortunate that it became adversarial from the very first meeting, and it never let up.
We asked them to provide something in writing.
Yep. Well, they've been unreasonable.
They didn't want to.
Yeah, I know.
They never provided us with what we asked. They didn't. That's that's how that all, yeah, the trust is not there anymore.
I think we're kinda heading off.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure this is not very fruitful.
Okay.
Of course, there is, the crisis is gonna continue, and we hope the town might at some point take a take an interest, we'll help and we can see what happens.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
I hope this has been somewhat educational for us. I hope that everybody, I'm sure Act 250 is gonna be words you're gonna hear.
Okay.
All right. Bye. Nice to see you, Setlada. Always nice to see you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye. All righty. Old business.
One thing, oh, yep. I'll say on the record, Cavendish has a long and lengthy history of quarrying. Where do you think the stone came from all these houses?
I understand.
You know, quarries are not automatically bad.
I understand.
They need to be run and operated properly.
That's right.
But they are an integral part of the historical fabric of Cavendish.
That's true.
Okay, um, old business. It can be brief. Continued discussion on affordable housing and the recent enactment known as the Housing Opportunities Made for Everyone Home Act, which is.
Have you read that?
A little bit, but we had the.
I have not.
We had the.
It's pretty thick.
Yeah, no, I haven't. I mean, I don't know, can you give us a brief? I mean, we don't have to spend a lot of time on.
I'll ask Jason the number one question, is there money available for the for, um, home development?
The governor's budget veto was overridden, yes.
Okay, that's.
There's money in there, so that that should help.
And the affordable housing, um, itself is twenty percent is geared towards a a section of people who have, what, eighty percent of the, um.
Income income.
I don't remember the whole thing, but then the other sixty percent is would be moderate or or non-affordable. Not non-affordable, that's the wrong way to put it, but higher-priced dwellings perhaps.
There's an emphasis on workforce housing and.
Right, so it's a mixed community.
Yep. A lot of the changes are, um, there's a lot of money in there, which is good, um, and there's a lot of zoning-related changes, like they're like forcing density essentially. When it comes to subdivision, there's, there's a, it enables a quick, easy process for minor subdivisions, so when we get to that, we might wanna talk about, you know, should that go through a formal hearing at the planning commission level, or could it be somebody like the town manager?
Changing density in villages?
For zoning and stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Really doesn't apply to Cavendish.
Okay.
And there's other stuff too, and I'm not up to speed on some of the other things in the bill.
Great.
Really thick, huh?
It's pretty big, yeah.
All right, so I guess we're kind of on hold until you guys start your study, but I mean, in the meantime, we were gonna look at, uh, properties that may be potential affordable housing sites. I mean, we've kind of done it, some of it already, but.
So we have started, we have a consultant that's helping us out, but, you know, it's started slowly. We've had some conversations about, you know, identifying like specific sites and, you know, we thought unless the town is telling us this one, and this one, and this one should go on the map, so to speak, we're probably gonna be a little more vague, but I think if Cavendish is interested in doing that.
Yes.
We may not wanna necessarily publicize it, but we wanna work with you to figure out whether these are the core sites or whatever.
Everybody want to agree with that?
We're good.
Okay. Yeah, I understood. What are we agreeing to exactly, I guess?
Identifying sites in town that are, in most cases, private property and saying that would be a good place to plug a house.
I think like if it makes sense within the, I mean, specifically, which I, we mentioned last time, like the Wyndham Housing Project or Trust, um, like, it needs to be something of scale.
Right, twenty units.
Like, oh, there's a cool, it's a tiny lot, but you can fit one, one unit. I don't know if it's worth the time for you guys to dive into something like that, but like the sandpit, where's that could be twenty, forty units on Twenty Mile Stream that we mentioned last, meaning like, that seems like a good.
Yes.
Potential for something there.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think that's a good look at it.
Cause we're looking at like twenty units minimum, right? Not a lot.
You know, it depends, I think, you know, you'd have to talk to the trust or some other developer to understand what makes sense in Cavendish, but, yeah, I think usually we're seeing something in that twenty unit.
But that's not a restrictive number, is that correct?
No.
Right.
They have in economics, they got a mixture of works.
Sure.
I don't know what that number specifically is in Cavendish, but I think that's a.
There is a wetland there.
I've heard that number from.
Yeah.
Blood lower here, but that's twenty.
Yeah, I remember last time. Yeah, it sounds like that was one specific lot of projects.
Yeah, yeah.
They're saying twenty to thirty is usually.
Wayne's fill it in a wetland?
That area there.
Okay.
Makes sense for them, cause, you know, they got operational costs and all these other things.
Yeah.
It's twenty to thirty units. For them, it usually makes sense. So, you know, I think that's a good rule of thumb, you know, larger lots that would fit something like that, so.
When they say twenty to thirty units, are they meaning small, single-family homes or they're talking more along the lines of an apartment complex?
Usually it's a larger apartment building with about twenty or so units within it. They tend to have a mix of studios, one-bedroom, maybe two-bedroom units, a combination of that. Again, usually is what we're seeing with projects that they do. That doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're talking about here, but, again, I think it's just, it would be helpful to know, these are some vacant sites in town or underutilized buildings, like the one behind me, you know, things like that that you think would make some sense to flag for developers to be.
Okay.
Jason, one thing that we mentioned last time was like, oh, there's, there's a bunch of, you know, small places where, oh, apartment here, apartment here, Bruce had has a building where it could be another two units. Are there any, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily this or, but like, is there any money or incentive programs or anything you know about of like, you know, to to boost those, or maybe you could get twenty units across the town with these like little apartments or or things like that?
Yeah, I mean, there's the Vermont Housing Improvement Program. Sometimes we refer to it as V HIP. So that can pay, so if somebody has a vacant unit, like, let's say you you own a house and there's a, an apartment that needs a ton of work over the garage, they could get some, they can get up to fifty thousand dollars through this V HIP program to fix it up and bring it online. So, you know, that could be another angle, is if you're aware of properties like that, you could connect them to, again, it's the housing trust that's managing that particular program, and, you know, the property owner would need to contact them, but you can try to make that connection. So then that might be a different twist to this as well, if you're aware of those sorts of situations, that would be good too.
And fifty's a limit.
I think that's the idea.
Per unit, per property?
Per apartment unit, yeah.
So that's for refurbishment, but then, and this kind of speaks to one of the things you brought up last time, is there incentive to either whether somebody has an ADU or a Airbnb that they're using now? The monetary incentive seems to be for the owner to to keep it as an Airbnb, short-term rental. Is there any incentive to, after you've refurbished it, you know?
Not to do that.
Exactly, to provide it for long-term housing.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's some strings attached, so this, this V HIP program requires affordable, you have to rent it to, you know, meeting their affordability criteria for a period of five years. After that, you know.
It's up there, right.
You could do whatever, but, um, so there are some strings attached to that.
Right, and that, but the V HIP money is just for refurbishment, there's nothing beyond that to make up the difference between, like, hey, you could make, I'm throwing this out there, eighty grand a year on Airbnb, you're only gonna receive forty from a long-term rental. Of course, those numbers are purely hypothetical.
I don't, I don't know all the details, but I don't think they're gonna loan you money if you're gonna do Airbnb or something like that, like, you have to say, yes, I agree to these stipulations for five years, you know. Like, you have to say, yes, I agree to these stipulations for five years, you know, rent to a low-income individual. After, again, after five years, whatever you do, you probably could put on Airbnb.
Right, we have nothing in the interim to incentivize the gap between long-term rental, Airbnb. Okay, thank you.
You know, and it could also, like, we own, we own property at the, in our office. We're in my cell, but we own it right now. And we were thinking of, we have two vacant commercial units. And so we were contemplating this VHIPT program to convert it into an apartment. So, you know, it could.
The garage next door, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
And the one out back?
Yeah, the, well, we, we could potentially do it in the barn, but the old post office building?
Yeah.
And then the old tennis space.
That'd be great.
Yes, we do, so. So, so it could do the, things like that.
Town water, sewer, close to the interstate?
Yeah.
Yeah, no sewer, that's right.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Affordable housing? Okay. So I guess we probably.
I know what I'm doing. Go ahead, turn on that brick house into LHIPT.
All right. Okay. Review correspondence? There is none. I don't know why we don't get it anymore. I mean, remember, we used to get piles of it and that. But, okay. Motion to adjourn?
Everybody's forgotten about us.
Make the motion, okay? Jeff lead the motion, second, anybody? Okay, Shirley? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, okay.